Good evening, everyone. So today is Tuesday, June 18th. This is the regular meeting of the, or no, this is a special meeting of the Joint School Committee and City Council. And we are being recorded right now. The meeting is live on public access. The meeting is being livestreamed through the city's box cast on the website. And so before we get started, I'll ask everyone to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. So the clerk will call the roll, and then I will explain why we're here tonight and what we're doing and how it's going to go.
Anderson Burgos?
Here.
Bertley?
Here.
Devine? Givner? Graney?
Here.
Jardine?
Here.
LaGrasse Smith?
Here.
Murphy Rumbaletti?
Here.
Ocasio?
Yeah.
Israel Rivera?
Here.
Jenny Rivera?
Here.
Sullivan? Bacon?
Here.
Carbaro Raco? Raca? Colomore?
He's here.
Garcia?
He's right there.
Yep.
Oh, Mike.
Here.
Lefave?
Oh, here.
Rivera Cologne?
Here.
Romero?
Here.
Tensley Williams?
Present.
Willian Willehan?
Here.
Wilson?
Here.
And one more item of housekeeping. Councilor Jardine is on Zoom, so I would entertain a motion to take a roll call vote that for the purposes, oh, Councilor Givner's here, that for the purposes of this meeting would be applicable to all motions to remove an item from the table, place items on the table, package items, open or close a public hearing, or suspend the rolls unless there is an objection. Motion was made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. So this is a meeting, the purpose of this meeting tonight is for both the school committee and the city council to appoint a member to fill the vacant at-large school committee seat. And I am joined up here on the podium this evening by our esteemed vice chair, Mildred Lefave. And I would entertain a motion to suspend the rules to allow Mildred to help facilitate.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved, thank you. Basically, the purpose of this evening, we have a lot of really awesome candidates who have submitted their resumes. There are, there may be folks here tonight in the audience that might not have submitted a resume, and they're also welcome to submit their name this evening. But we are, we do have a stack of resumes here. And so the purpose is to, the way we're going to do it and the way we did it last time when we appointed Dr. Rivera Cologne to fill the vacant Ward Three seat, every candidate, you have the opportunity, three to five minutes, just introduce yourselves and, you know, why you're, why you're here. And we can open it up for questions. And Mildred is, or Councilor, or school committee member, Lefave, is going to help field the questions from school committee members. I will help with city councilors. And, you know, we encourage everyone, if you are choosing to ask questions, that's awesome. We encourage you to, you know, ask everyone those questions, you know, just for the sake of fairness. And, you know, before we even get started, I want to thank every, any person who put their name in, thank you for doing this. I hope that no matter what happens, you'll consider public office, public service. We appreciate you just putting your name in. It really takes a lot of bravery and commitment to our city. And so we're very thankful for everyone who put their name in, no matter what happens. And for the purposes of this evening, tonight, there are, so we have 13 city councilors, we have 10 school committee members, well, nine. So the first person to get to 12 votes this evening is the person who will fill the vacant seat. And the clerk will be calling the roll, and, and, and we'll just, we'll go from there. And we'll, we'll go as many times as we need to until someone gets to 12 votes. Are there any questions or concerns seeing no further discussion? Yes, so, do you want to, do you want to mention that? Go ahead.
So real quickly and just to clarify, so although the position is a four-year position, according to our charter and our policies, it will only be to serve through December 31st, 2025. And then whoever runs for the seat through the special election at the next municipal will then serve the remaining two years.
Great, thank you. So I'm going based off the stack of resumes that I've got in front of me, and that's just the order that we'll go in, no rhyme or reason. First up, Kyle Chambers. And Kyle, if you'd like, there's an open seat here, so if you do want to sit and, or if it's, if you prefer to stand, you totally can stand at the microphone, whatever you want. Just make sure that that green button is on. If it's lit up, that means your microphone is on. And you want to make sure that you're speaking, this goes for everyone, but speak directly into the microphone so that everyone at home can hear you.
Okay, everybody can hear me, right?
Yes.
We're good?
Yes.
Okay, cool. So, good evening, everyone. My name is Kyle Chambers. I, I am a veteran. I served in the Marine Corps from 2011 to 2015. I served the community as a 911 dispatcher for the Holyoke Police Department for just over five years. And I currently serve as a clerk in the Registrar's Office at UMass Amherst. I've, I've done that job for two years, and it was my calling. I absolutely love the position that I work. I am a parent of a kindergartner, soon to be first grader, at the Ian White School. And I'm so excited to be here tonight as, as a parent who believes in what the city is doing. I did have three key initiatives that I wanted to kind of talk to you all tonight about, and these are kind of things that I really wanted to focus on. Number one being our post-receivership education plans. Obviously, it's a, it's a big deal that Desi has finally allowed the Holyoke schools a way out of, of receivership. And so I would like to, as a parent, kind of look at what the state has given us over the past nine years, figure out what works. There's a lot of things that do work. The dual-language model that was introduced into our schools, I, I think is, is tremendous. You know, what doesn't work? Many would say the block scheduling for third graders. As a PTO member at Ian White School, I would say that's probably something that needs to be reevaluated. Second off, I wanted to address mental health support. I remember watching a school committee meeting not too long ago, and the, the, the school representative for dean mentioned that the, that the resources that our students have are insufficient. We are in 2024, so we're, after the pandemic, you know, our, our country is different. Things have changed so much, and we are facing a mental health crisis in our schools. And while I, I, I did watch the, the budget meeting from the superintendent a couple weeks ago, and I do say there are things that, that address a lot of the issues that we have, I think we still have a long way to go. And I think it's important that we evaluate where the biggest need is. And those of us parents that are truly involved really want to help with that. In March, myself and a couple of other members of our PTO, some of whom I know pretty well, we ended up meeting the school committee and had a very productive conversation about things like recess and lunch, and, and how important that social piece of education is. And I, and I think it was very, it was, it was very impressive to me because I felt like we were actually being heard as parents. So the last thing I want to focus on is educator support and retention. We have a young workforce of educators. I, I remember going to school at Ian White and seeing one set of teachers, and then years later, you know, I don't see any of those teachers anymore, which tells me there's a lot of younger educators that, that, that work for the city. It takes some special skills to work in the city of Holyoke as an educator. And I think we need to kind of focus on what it takes to retain those educators and incentivize staying here. Because if they work here for five years and then they leave, we have to start over again. And how much, how much resources are we wasting in, in allowing that to happen? So, yeah, that's, that's basically me. I don't know how much time I have, I haven't been.
Just about under, it's just under five, so.
Okay.
Perfect.
So, that's me, hi.
Thank you. Any questions?
Ms. Wilson? So you spoke about initiatives, initiatives involving money. With our financial situation, and we are in a very good state here with our schools, where would you find those funds in order to, you know, incentivize retention as well as work more with mental health and issues?
Yeah, that's a great question. I mean, I'm, I'm not immune to the idea that we get something like, what is it, only 12% of the school's budget comes from the city taxes? Less, less than 12%. And the rest comes from the Student Opportunity Act, I believe it's called. So I know there is additional funds. The, the state recently approved, through a vote, additional funding for the, the fair, was it the, the fair? Yeah, okay. I'll remember it later. So there, there's additional funding there that I, I think we can definitely take a look at, but also, and I, I haven't gone through the budget with a fine-tooth comb, but I know there's, there's got to be, there's got to be creative ways that we as parents, as educators, and as administrators can find redundancies and, and find places where we can, where we can find money. I mean, as, as PTO members, because I, I started serving on the Ian White PTO, we, you know, we, we're working on trying to raise funds to support the Ian White School. I know there's a citywide PTO that's also starting to stand up, that's really trying to do the same thing. And so, like, I think, you know, as parents, like, we're, we're going to try and, and find ways to fund some of these things.
Other questions? Did you, Councilor Rivera?
I just, I just have a comment, more or less, and just, I say thank you, first of all, for putting your hat in, right? It takes a lot to come in, sit down, and just kind of put yourself out there. But one of the things I kind of wanted to see just a little bit more is, one of the initiatives that you organized, and you said you were proud of in your cover letter, was around the MCAS? See if you can expand a little more on that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Organizing, just to hear more about the organizing experience.
Yeah, so I worked with teachers within Holyoke to collect signatures, to put the question on the ballot, which would, if successful, eliminate the, the punitive graduation requirement of the MCAS, which disproportionately has harmed our students, has harmed students of color, students in low-income households where they may be food or, or shelter insecure. You know, what are these students supposed to do after they've gone through high school, after we have collectively said, you know what, you're good to go, you should be graduating? But the state says no because you didn't pass a test that maybe, or maybe, maybe not, you didn't understand? So I, I was really, I was really fired up to start collecting signatures. I worked with people in Hampden County. Hampden County was a big source of, of people who are interested in this. I walked around UMass Amherst where I live, I took a lunch break, collected signatures, talked to students who were voters in the state of Massachusetts, who absolutely saw this as like our chance to do something right. I mean, we are one, in, in Massachusetts, we are one of 12 states that has a graduation requirement that's tied to a test. Well, I guarantee you, if you have a child that is thinking more about where their next meal is going to come from, that's setting them up for failure, you know? And, and I'd be interested to see how many students in the city of Holyoke have been hurt by this, because we have really good initiatives like the opportunity, or the, the, sorry, I wrote this down, the Opportunity Academy, that flies contradictory to that. How are we serving our students as educators if they're going to be let down by a test, by an arbitrary test, made by people who did not write a test for them? You know, that, that, that's just the thing about, about Holyoke, if I can expand a little bit more. Holyoke is a unique community with unique issues, but a unique population. Our problems are not going to be solved by cookie-cutter answers from edupreneurs. They're going to have to come from within our community. We collectively have to figure out how to make our kids succeed when they are competing with students from all around western Massachusetts who are in schools that are well, that are much better funded than ours.
Ms. Tensley Williams?
Nice to see you, Mr. Chambers.
Thank you.
What's the age of your child that's going to Ian White?
Uh, so he is six years old.
Okay. You mentioned that you met with the parents, and you also mentioned recess and lunch. Were there a lot of problems with the parents when they told you about recess and lunch, that they had a problem with that?
Yeah, that, that's a great question. So when we, when my wife and I first started joining the PTO meetings, there, there were a lot of parents who were concerned that recess was being withheld from students who were having behavioral issues, which seems kind of counterintuitive if you think about it, because a lot of those students have pent-up energy and they need to get it out. And we also advocated for more time at lunch because a lot of students were not getting the nutrition they need to sustain themselves. And so that was definitely something that we heard early on. I, I haven't heard so much about it recently. I know, I don't know if it's just a matter of people have said it so many times that, what's the point, or, or, you know, but it's, it's definitely still an issue. And, and we, we did have a response from the superintendent, who was looking at extending recess for, for students. You know, but I, I, I will always advocate for, for more, for our, for, for my students, for my son, and for the students that he goes to school with, and, and all the students in the city.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilor Graney?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chambers, for putting your hat in the ring. What requirements would you have for graduation?
So I think the grad, the, I, I don't know exactly what the graduation requirements are in the city beyond passing the current curriculum. I'm more just focused on eliminating the MCAS graduation requirements, simply because, again, it doesn't factor in, it, it, it doesn't factor in students that may not understand the test. I, I actually had a conversation with a coworker about this recently, and she said, well, when, when we had students who didn't understand, and they were in special education, they had somebody that was there to, to kind of guide them through it. But, you know, what happens when we don't have those, those things in place? You know, it's, I'm okay with what we have at the moment, and I'm absolutely okay with reevaluating what we have. But I'm, I'm firmly against the MCAS being used as a measure. I know, I know we're not going to get rid of the MCAS. It's a federal requirement, that it's here to stay, and it does collect a lot of data. We are a very data-driven society, but what happens when we have that data? What are we doing with it? So.
I understand the unfairness of some of the questions on the MCAS. For instance, if the MCAS test asks one of our children, where do you see seagulls? And that youngster has never been to the seashore, and the youngster answers Kmart Plaza, the youngster's absolutely correct. But he'll be marked wrong on the MCAS. But we do have to have a system of measurement before we place our kids into the workspace and into the world out there, which is a very competitive, big, bad world. So once again, what requirement would you have for our students to, to graduate from high school?
Do we?
Because presently, there are some children out there around the country that are graduating without being able to read or write.
Yeah, no, I, I, I think if they're able to pass the standards that we are setting for them, other, like, independent of what the, the test is, because even if they pass the test, if they can't, if they can't pass our standards, they still don't get a diploma, you know? They, it's, it's absolutely necessary that they pass the, the, they pass the standards that we set. And I would be happy to, to reevaluate that if, if, if we, if we find that we actually need to reevaluate what we have. But I think if we take this test out, we can have that say and say, you know what, this student needs more education, this, or, or these students are, are absolutely able to, to succeed.
Uniformity? What uniformity would there be?
Uniformity within the system, not so much with other school systems. Because, again, we have a unique population. We have students who are coming over from places like Puerto Rico that maybe have never, I mean, maybe have never spoken English before, and they're learning it for the first time. You know, how do you, how do you assess the value of a student? How do you assess their intelligence? The science says that it takes more than a test to do that. And so if we can come up with a whole student-centered measure of success for a student, I think that is where we'll find that we, we, that's where we'll succeed.
Okay, all well and good, it was the MCAS test that caused the state to come in and take over our school system, of which we were doing a very fine job at the time. Thank you.
Thank you. Great. Do you have someone?
Dr. Rivera Cologne?
Thank you so much. So I have two quick questions. One is a yes or no question. Are you going to run for the position once you're done with the term?
Yes.
And the second question is, how are you going to do in terms of time management? Right now, the expectation is that we have two meetings a month, plus meetings with our committees. I, for one, I meet with three different subcommittees and the two meetings. There's preparation in between, a lot of reading in order to come prepared for the meetings. How is your time management and in order to be able to fulfill the, the responsibilities of the role?
That's a great question. So I, I use a calendar where I literally plan out every hour of my day. I, I have ADHD, and so I, like, I found that that's what works for me. And believe me, there was a lot of trial and error in figuring out how to do that successfully. But yeah, no, I, I budget my time throughout, throughout the day, figuring out like what I could, what I can make time for. So I'm, I'm sorry, you said two meetings a month, and then three in committee?
I'm in particular, I have three, but most people have two committees, subcommittees.
Okay. No, I, I mean, I have, I have time nights and weekends. You know, I, I would absolutely prioritize this. I think it's so important, you know, that we get somebody in this position that intends to make a difference for their children. And whether I get this or not, whether, whether you agree with what I'm saying or not, I mean, I'm still going to work with my, with my colleagues in the PTO. We're still going to make things better for our students.
Thank you. Anyone else? No? Sure?
Hopefully, this is the last question. So, like I said, we're going to, I'm going to ask the question, but this is going to be everyone's same question. So, as a school committee continues their work to exit receivership, how will your personal and professional experience help strengthen the work?
Well, from my time as a 911 dispatcher, I have come to learn the community. I've, I've seen the best in the community, and I've seen some of the most challenging aspects of what our community deals with day in and day out. As someone that works in education, I, I still maintain my, my links to how education is and how things are going. And I think, and, and my time in the military, my regiment, you know, stuff, you know, a lot of those habits, they, they kind of stuck with me through the years. I definitely, I, I feel like I bring probably the most unique set of circumstances. I grew up in the city, I went to the Holyoke schools, I graduated from the Holyoke High School class of 2006, which seems like a really long time ago upon retrospection, but, but I mean, I know this community. It's changed a lot, and I feel like I've maintained those ties with the community, and I believe that would, that would serve me well.
Thank you. All right. Thank you very much. We appreciate your time, Kyle. All right, next in my stack of resumes is Joe Kershane, and I believe Joe is on Zoom. Hello.
Hello.
So, take it away, Joe.
Awesome, all right. Thank you, everybody, for, for having me. So it's a little serendipitous. I also, actually, I should apologize, first of all, for not being able to be there in person. I had a pre-scheduled family vacation, and any of you who have ever disappointed a four-year-old know that I probably made the right choice, so. It's serendipitous, I, I said that because I had spent, I had, I had three different conversations with people in my neighborhood concerning the Holyoke Public Schools and their reluctance to send their students to them. And then this position popped up, and I said, you know, I just spent three hours of my life having those discussions, like, maybe, maybe, maybe this is worth it. My reasons for doing this, so the biggest one is similar to what Kyle had just said. I have a son who is entering pre-K at Kelly in September, so I'm going to be a Holyoke Public Schools parent for the next 13 years, so to say I'm invested in this working out would be an understatement. I also am very invested in the Holyoke education system in particular, because I was an educator in the system for eight years, from 2012 to 2020. I was an English teacher at Holyoke High School. And although I did move on to other opportunities, and I'm being truthfully honest here, there hasn't been a day that's gone by since I've missed being a part of the Holyoke School community, for all its good, for all its bad. And to me, this seems like a really great way to, to get back in there and hopefully do some good again. And then, I mean, the last reason I'm doing this, I've always viewed, I went into education because I view a city or town's publication, public education system as the foundation of the entire community. I mean, that might sound melodramatic, but I do really, truly feel that way. You know, I went to school in Holyoke, Donahue de Peck to Holyoke High, and I met people from parts of the city that I wouldn't have known otherwise. I formed lifelong friendships, and I, I feel like it really is kind of the heart of a community. And one of the great tragedies of receivership is when you lose control of that heart of your community, your community starts to erode. And so we have what I think is a supercritical moment here. We're transferring from, from receivership back to local control, and in a sense, this is a chance to kind of get our community back. And I feel really strongly that we have to get it right. I put my name in because I feel like I have a unique perspective. I mean, obviously, I am driven intensely as a parent who is about to entrust my son for the next 13 years to the Holyoke Public Schools, but I also. But I also, I worked in the schools pre-receivership in that little weird in-between period, and then when receivership was in place. So I kind of saw the trajectory of receivership. I also worked at a pretty high level when I worked at the high school, doing a high school redesign with some of the upper leadership in the district. And I got to know Desi and their initiatives and their language pretty well in that time. So I feel between my experience as a student, my passion as a father, and my experience as an educator, that I'm, you know, uniquely suited to just kind of step in this role and just like start getting it done, right? Like, education can be tough. There's jargon, there's a million initiatives. There's so many acronyms. And I feel like I would do a very good job at this time when we are, it's, it's super critical, just kind of coming on board and like helping us right the ship. So, you know, and I also say, you know, fully, whether you choose me or not, and I, I don't think anyone here doesn't know this, but like, we gotta get this right, right? This is, this is an extremely unique opportunity. Receivership was complicated. It was clearly a bad thing in the sense that, you know, when a community loses agency for its school system, I, I never view that as a good thing. But there was also some really good stuff that came out of it. There was some really bad stuff that came out of it. There was stuff that came out of it that was sometimes good, sometimes bad, depending on the context. And so I just think we need to pick somebody who's ready to like step in and just kind of wrap their head around that, what is a really complex topic. So there you go. That's me. Thank you very much.
And I see Counselor Devine's hands.
Hi, welcome and hope you're having a good vacation.
So far, so good, yeah.
But, and, and just, this is strictly to bring a little humor into the equation. I'm looking at your resume, and you have an associate's degree in psychology from Holyoke Community College. You may not know this, but there's seven women on the city council, and there's five women on the school committee. And I noticed that one of the courses that you took was Psychology of Women. And I was wondering if you could give us any hints or any thing to help us through this transition? Again, just a little humor.
I, I didn't know this was gonna be impossible. I, I thought it might be tough, but no. So, yeah, I, your guess is as good as mine there, sorry.
Okay. Thank you.
You figure it out, let us know.
I will.
Counselor Greeney?
Just quickly, your attitude or your, your concern about the MCAS test?
Sure. I mean, I think, and it had been brought up in the previous conversation, it's a complex topic, right? I don't think most people are opposed to some sort of standard of measurement to just see where students are at, particularly towards graduation time. I think we've seen the effects of what happens when you use that data punitively. Like, I, but I don't think like that's, as you had just said, that's why Holyoke lost control of its school system. I think there's a happy middle ground. I think MCAS as a single data point can be important. I also think that there's discussions now, and I'd be all for that, of a more robust kind of assessment system where, you know, portfolios, demonstrations, students showing that they've met the standards we want them to. And those standards can be slightly different depending on the student's trajectory. I mean, I think we all need the basics of reading and writing and math and all that. But I think there's a ton of ideas out there about how we can do this differently. It's just a matter of deciding which one I think would be right for Holyoke.
Thank you.
Dr. Rivera Cologne?
So my two questions yet again. Are you gonna run for the position once the term ends?
I plan on it, yeah.
And then how are you with time? Because we have a lot of requirements of things that we have to do. So is that something that you can accommodate in your life right now?
Yes, I think so. So I, I, I'll, I'll again echo what was said, like, I live and die by my calendar. You know, I'm 39, and I don't know how people did it before electronic calendars were a thing. But so, yeah, I think I, this is a priority. You know, I'm gonna currently work in a position where I will have afternoons and evenings. And this is, this is our student, our community. This is it. So yeah, I think I will, this, this will be a priority. And I also, you said there's a lot of reading, and I'm pretty good with that. So I feel like I can, I can handle that.
Counselor Rivera?
Just to be consistent too, I guess I'll say thank you and for throwing your hat in. And thank you for running for public, well, considering public office. And then I think we had agendas through the public school system back in those days. Remember the agendas? That's what I think helped out with the calendar understanding. Thank you.
Yeah, they had, they used to hand those out, didn't they? I think, yeah.
And from our student rep, Mr. Kennedy?
I just have one question for you. So obviously, you are a parent, a parent of Holyoke Public Schools. So you know, you know, you know some of the ins and outs. But are, do you know, are you up to date on like the, the current like budget and the financial situation and like, you know, the curriculum that is going on? Like, have you watched the school committee meetings? Like, do you have a rudimentary understanding of the current state of the district?
Yeah, so I mean, I've been attending all the, the meetings I've had recently about the transition out of receivership, even before this was a thing. I was just really curious. Yeah, I mean, I, I won't pretend that I've studied the budget deeply in my free time, and I have some intimate knowledge of it. But I do think, I like, I know I'm very well versed in like the funding mechanism by the state and how they do that. And I, as far as curriculum, I mean, I, I'll, I'll confess to knowing a little bit more about what's going on at the upper levels because that's kind of my wheelhouse. But I'm gonna get very interested in what's happening in the lower levels very soon. And I think, you know, my background in education kind of situates me nicely to just really kind of figure that out, so.
And hopefully, your last question. As a school committee continues their work to exit receivership, how will your personal and professional experience help strengthen the work?
Right, so I mean, and I know of all the issues that were raised tonight and all the time, teacher retention is a big one. And, you know, I'm somebody who, I mean, I just told you, I think about, I miss the community of the Holyoke Public Schools every day, and I still chose to kind of move on. So I think when you talk about teacher retention, got some experience in that area. And I also just think, you know, the perspective has been for, what, nine, 10 years, that what's been happening in the schools has been imposed. And sometimes that's true, and maybe sometimes it's not. But that's the perspective is, is we as parents, as citizens, like, it's not ours anymore, right? And so I think in terms of my background of living here and going through the schools, working in the schools, and now being a parent in the schools, like, I just want to be a face of like, no, guys, it, it, it's ours again. Like, we can do this, we, we have some say, right? So, you know, I just, I think I can do that. And my goal is to make it so that everybody in Holyoke chooses to send their students to the schools because they feel like they have that ownership. So we can start to get, you know, our community back.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Joe. I don't see any other questions. We appreciate your time.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving to the next resume, I have Jocelyn Roby. Come on in. Just make sure that green light is on. Oh, not yet.
There we go. Now you can hear me? Yep. Okay. So I think I said in my interest letter, I've been involved with Holyoke Public Schools since, or district-wide since 2017. I have a son who just graduated eighth grade from STEM Academy, so he'll be going to Holyoke High in the fall. I started off when he was in kindergarten at Donahue volunteering in his classroom. I continued that in first grade. When he was in second grade, I went back to work full-time. I'm a real estate attorney, so I was putting in long hours at a law firm. And over the years, actually considered running for this, you know, for the school committee. But with the hours that I was putting in at my former job, I was not able to give the time that you need from me. So when this position came up, and I just had a job change in February where I'm working remotely from home, I work for a underwriting title insurance company. And we work with local real estate attorneys to help them build their businesses. So I'm out and about in the community all the time. I'm out there networking. I'm very involved with chamber events, school events. The DPAC Committee, which is, if you don't know, the District Parent Advisory Committee or Council, that's the one that I joined in 2017. And that really kind of opened my world beyond just the one school that my son was attending. That showed me the whole experience of all the other schools in Holyoke and let me see forward when he was in elementary school to how his middle school experience would be and now going into high school as well. So I'm very familiar with receivership, with a lot of the initiatives, with a lot. Again, I don't study the budget line by line, but I've seen a lot of talk. We've had a lot of DPAC meetings. And I was also on the rezoning committee and very active in the middle school building committees. So I've seen a lot of the numbers as part of that process. I really just want to get involved. And I threw my hat in the ring because being involved in DPAC, one of the things I say every single meeting, and Josh probably has heard it when he joins our calls. I know Superintendent Soto hears me say it every single month, is how do we get more parents involved in Holyoke? If it's this level at the school committee, how do we get more people at the DPAC? Because we have, we don't always have a representative from every school there. And it hurts because we're getting this wonderful information we can bring back to our schools, and some of those schools aren't getting that information. So that would be one of my major initiatives, whether it's globally at the school committee level, whether it's district-wide, or you just want to get involved at your, your child's school PTO level. That's wonderful too, because parents who are involved at a bigger level can bring that information back to you and to the individual school. So I want to just get parents involved too. And like everyone else, I support in being withdrawn from receivership. But unlike a lot of parents, I didn't run from Holyoke when that process happened. A lot of children that I know, like the previous speaker just said, they're neighbors. I speak with my neighbors, and they, they drive every day to other towns to bring their school, kids to other schools, whether it's school choice at another public school or they're paying to send their kids to private school. And I am a champion for Holyoke Public Schools. And I just did the research myself because he's going into high school and showed all of his friends' parents, no, Holyoke does have better options. We have that partnership with HCC. And my son has his sights on getting an associate's degree while he's in high school. So that is something that a lot of the kids that he's playing sports with and working summer jobs with, going out of town, they don't have that opportunity. But they could if they stayed here. So I'm just really passionate about the entire district, making it a better place for all the children of Holyoke, whether it's this, you know, the kids that my son goes to school with or the kids coming in, and then the next generation as well. So I welcome any questions.
Thank you, Jocelyn. I see Counselor Greeney?
Maintain consistency with how do you feel about the MCAS test?
Yes, I feel much like the past speaker. I don't want to abolish it completely. I do see the need for gathering the data. I do think there should be maybe more exceptions or work with students, you know, that might have mental health issues or anxiety disorders. Or I know, you know, things like ADHD and anyone with an IEP already has special things in place. But maybe we need to open that up more for the people who might not, doesn't necessarily have a diagnosis from a doctor or a mental health professional, but maybe just have that thing that some of us get with test anxiety. So maybe there just needs to be more coaching in place, more practice tests for the students, or some other mechanism to help them get to that finish line so that they can get their diploma.
Ms. Tensley-Williams?
I'm very excited about your excitement.
Thank you.
And I've always had a great concern about parent involvement. So that's really one of my pet peeves. So if you can come up with a way that can help us to get the parents involved, I will jump in the boat with you. Because my sons graduated from Dean, and I remember going to the Parent Advisory Committee. Three parents, three parents came. So that's been a problem, I think, for years. So if you could come up with a way, I promise I'll jump in and help you.
Yeah, and I, I, I welcome new ideas too. You know, we can't keep doing, there's no change, there's no change, right? So we can't keep doing the old things and sending home the flyers at the beginning of the school year and saying, please come to PTO. We gotta get grassroots. When we were at Donahue, we would set up a PTO table if it's pizza night or, you know, book fair night or whatever, you know, cookies with Santa night. Whatever was going on at the school, we made sure there's a PTO table there too so that they're not just saying, oh, it's not just those boring meetings that we have to go to, you know? There's other opportunities, there's volunteer opportunities. You know, if you can come during the school day, great. But let's give them after-school or before-school opportunities. Let's give, let's all give how we can.
Because I remember taking 600 flyers, knocking on doors, and I think one parent came. And that just really upset me.
It's very, very disheartening. I do like that now sometimes Zoom is an option because I do, you know, I don't want to shame parents who legitimately can't make it if they have to work, if they have other children at home that they're caring for. But I do love when opportunities either have a Zoom option or a childcare option or, you know, meals, if that's a problem for some families, just to do whatever we can to get more people involved.
Thank you, it's nice to have you.
Thank you.
Dr. Rivera Cologne?
Thank you. Again, for the sake of consistency, will you run once your term is over?
Yes, if, if I was appointed to this position, yes, I would want to carry it out.
And then you explained a little bit about this already, so you can keep your answer concise. But talking about the time commitment, how are you gonna manage that?
Well, I did talk about my job change, so that's a big weight off my shoulders, going from 80 to 100 hours a week to like 45 feels like I don't even have a job. But, you know, I will, I have always been able, even when I was in my previous job, I made sure that I stayed involved in DPAC. That goes on my calendar at the beginning of the school year when we get that, that calendar of every month, whether it's the third Tuesday or fourth Wednesday or whatever, I put those on my calendar so that nothing gets scheduled during that time. If I have, you know, an emergency or something that I can't avoid, then I'm sure to follow up, I'm sure to let people know I'm not going to be there ahead of time, and then I follow up to see what I missed.
Counselor Devine?
Yeah, thank you. Just a real quick question. Thank you very much for coming down here. Under your education, Western New England College, CALI experience. What's a CALI?
It's just an award they give Cali. It's this organization for law schools. In every class in law school, the top scorer for that class gets the Cali Award. So that just means that in those two classes in law school, I had the best class, best grade in the class.
Great, okay, thank you.
No problem.
All right, thank you. As, so now it's my turn. As the school, the school committee continues their work to exit receivership, how will your personal and professional experience help strengthen the work?
Um, I think pretty much combining everything I've said already. On the personal level, I've stayed involved in this since my son has been in kindergarten. He's now in eighth grade. In just my desire and passion to help out and give back and build our community and be that cheerleader for Holyoke Public Schools. And then on the professional side, you know, I'm, like one of the previous speakers said, I'm not a serial politician. I'm not doing this for that or as a stepping stone to anywhere else. I'm doing this because I truly want to give back. But yet, my role as an attorney, you know, I'm involved in a lot of boards, so it's not foreign to me when you guys are doing the, you know, can I have a motion and seconded and all of that stuff? I'm gonna jump right in. I understand how to do this, and I want to be here, and I want to represent the kids of Holyoke.
All right. Thank you, Jocelyn.
Just hit the button? Yeah.
Appreciate your time. Next, we have Stephen Cantrowitz. Come on in. And then you just want to hit that button in the front. Thank you.
Hi, thank you, and thank you for the opportunity. My name is Stephen Cantrowitz. I've been a homeowner in Holyoke since, it's almost five years now. I currently teach culinary arts with the town of South Hadley for about a year and a half. I taught at Dean from 2016 to 2022. I left in November, culinary arts. Taught with the Department of Corrections in Connecticut for a year. I was approached by peers from both Hadley and Holyoke to, who know me, saying you should reach out and try to fill the seat. I have deep empathy with everything that's going on in Holyoke. When I was interviewed here, it was August 2016. Right bef, it was a day hotter than this. And when I came down to speak to the principal and the new CT director, she goes, in Connecticut, why'd you choose Holyoke? And I did my due diligence, and I saw, I think at that time, Dean was the lowest performing school and the lowest performing district in the state. And I said, basically, nothing's working, you guys are gonna try anything. And they said, you know, can you start Monday? The- The grabbing the bull by the horns attitude we had at Dean made it a great, exciting place to work. I loved it there. As a result, receivership, admin, leadership, money, it was time for me to go. I had a lot of disagreements with the powers that be at the school at that time, but I never left Holyoke. A lot of my students are in co-op, I speak to. A lot of my teacher friends are still in touch. And I think one of the strengths I have with this position is I don't have ties, children-wise and student-wise, to the town. I think I could really look at this as an educator trying to affect education. And going into the DESI data from, I think, 2023, unless we really make big differences in teacher retention and chronic absenteeism, nothing's going to change. I think that has to be the focus. I think it was, I'm sorry, I forget your name, Wilson, Nelson? Okay. At the last meeting, you mentioned something that I agree wholeheartedly with, and I think that should be a major facet, is there needs to be some way to build remote aspect into learning for the entire district. Because if kids aren't in school, they're not learning. And I think DESI dropped the ball hard when we came back and they said, remote's over. We really, really dropped the ball. And that needs to be a major focus to bring us up to speed with technology and what's happening in education.
Thank you very much.
Counselor Greeney?
Yes, quickly, sir, from a vocational educator's perspective, what are your feelings about the MCAS?
I see a theme with your questions. If it was up to me, MCAS would be abolished right now. It's a standardized test. The amount, and I see this from teachers, the amount of time that test takes away from teaching, it does a disservice to every facet, the students, the teachers, the parents, the data collected. There is so much testing going on in schools. MCAS is just superfluous. And for it to be a condition of graduation is, I think, just unjust.
Thank you. Dr. Rivera Cologne?
My two questions. So should you be appointed, would you run for the next term?
I would love to say yes, definitely. But if I can give it my all, I would pass it on. I don't do things halfway. I teach in South Hadley, I teach an ESAL class at Holyoke Community College. I work at the Boys and Girls Club. I don't do three things at 80%. I try to do two things at 100. But I would feel I'm giving you the answer you want to hear, and that's not fair. If it works out, I'd love to. But let's take it one step at a time.
Thank you. And then moving on to the next question, which you kind of alluded to already, but it is a big time commitment. Do you think that you would be ready to do what the role entails?
Great question. Let's see how this next year and a half goes. I have no children, I mean, my children are all alone. I don't like time off. My last day of school is Friday. I'm already a little itchy, I need something to do. But my point is, if I do it, I do it 100%.
From our student rep, Mr. Kennedy.
All right. I know how strong of an advocate you are. You were one of my teachers, so I could see, I can see that, I can see how good of a leader you are. And I'm going to ask you the same question I asked the other candidate. And the reason I'm asking this is because, the reason we have to do this, the reason we have to have this meeting today, is because we need someone to immediately pick up and help lead our school in a direction, which is why I asked this question. Are you currently up to date? I know that you were an HPS teacher not too long ago, but are you currently up to date on how the district is functioning and everything that is going on? And I mentioned the budget, like our financial situation and things like that.
My only experience with the budget was my experience at Dean. And that's one of the reasons I left with, it came from the whole one school, three campus fiasco, to say. And presently, no budget. I'm not familiar with how the budget works as we speak. But what I hear from my peers and all is, it's interesting, they don't talk about the budget. They talk about admin, leadership, micromanaging, letting us teach, time management. I think every school should be a castle on the hill. But teachers as a whole learn to work with less. That doesn't mean you're going to be starved, but money doesn't buy success. So if it's done carefully and the teachers are engaged, I think it'll change. And I'll tell you right up front, if this position comes about, I would be a big advocate and a vocal advocate for the teachers. Because they are the ones that take care of the students. You can't have the students first and the teachers second. It's the teachers that have the boots on the ground, so they need our support.
And lastly, as the school committee continues their work to exit receivership, how will your personal and professional experience help strengthen the work?
I walk the walk. You know, I'm teaching, I'm active with the community from young kids at the Boys and Girls Club through the high school level up until post-secondary ESAL students in Holyoke Community College. So I'm immersed in it. And I think you have to, A, think really out of the box, not $1,000 stipend, not, you really have to think out of the box. And I think if I have a weakness, I say what's on my mind. And if I have a strength, I say what's on my mind. And I have had, I thought, really cool, out-of-the-box ideas that, oh, we can't do that. It's like, all right, then you got to move on. But I'm not afraid to push the envelope when it comes to moving forward.
Great. Thank you very much. Not seeing any other questions, so.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time. Thank you. All right. We have two more resumes in front of me. Up next is Devin Sheehan. And I'll let you take it away.
Thank you. First of all, thank you all for coming out tonight. I was going to say this very hot night, but it's, I think, sub-Arctic in here right now. And the chambers, so. My name is Devin Sheehan. I'm a lifelong resident of Hoyok, currently living on Ontario Avenue with my partner and our foster child. I say foster child, but I really should be saying that he's a 21-year-old attending Westfield State as a senior, so not really a child. And he's been with us for many years now. I have previous experience serving on the school committee. And my first time serving on the school committee was actually as a sophomore in high school, as the student representative. So it goes all the way back many years that I don't really want to count at this point. So I worked for the Springfield Public Schools for 11 years with responsibilities focusing on school finance, procurement, and currently a licensed public procurement officer here in the Commonwealth. And I helped coordinate educator professional development and licensure for the 25,000-student school district. My current role, I serve as the chief of staff to State Senator Jake Olivera. I previously served as the president of the Massachusetts Association of School Committees and in the community, been a member of the Children's Museum Board, the Hoyok Parade Committee, and I serve on the Distribution Committee for the Community Foundation of Western Massachusetts. I'm also, in the past, on the school committee, was proud to be a member when we introduced our dual-language programs and our full-day preschool here in the district. That's just two programs that have both grown and helped families immensely. Especially, I mean, dual-language is superb, but Hoyoke was one of the first that was offering full-day preschool. And to be able to offer that to families and to start learning early, but to also partner with our community partners through VOC, YMCA, Square One, Head Start, to make sure that families were fully served, is something that we can be very proud of as a community. I find myself pursuing this position to serve the greater Hoyoke community. All too often, in Hoyoke and within public education, we find families that find themselves not heard with their public schools. And I'm here to help be a voice for some of those families. The parents who are struggling to get phone calls back, are trying to work through IEP meetings, or just came to our area and trying to navigate how to enroll their student. I'm ready to help them with some of those challenges. We also need to talk about our workforce, and our school committee can be a driving force in developing our workforce. We have a treasure that is Dean Technical High School. And Dean has seen huge opportunities over the past years and increasing. We've had close to 50 students that were in co-ops this past year. We're seeing students once again graduating with their vocational certificates so they can go and start working. Because we know that the business owners in our community are saying, we need skilled labor. We will hire people tomorrow if you can send them to us. And the Hoyoke Public Schools can be a catalyst for doing that. But we also need to think differently with it. We see other communities in our area offering their Chapter 74 programs in the evening and offering other options for students who don't choose to attend vocational education for a full school day, but want different opportunities to attend that. And we need to expand that and work on those areas. We also, as a district, need to look inward to our workforce. We need to focus in on grow-your-own programs. We have people that are entering the workforce in our schools as paraprofessionals, as educators with bachelor's degrees that are looking for that next step. We should be bridging and helping our paraprofessionals to become teachers, if they choose to, to build those areas. We should be encouraging our educators to become administrators within our buildings and administrators within our system. Because that way, we will help retain and recruit our talent if we're providing more of those educational opportunities. We have helped many teachers through earning their master's degree. Some have left and some have stayed. But if they can see a commitment from the Hoyoke Public Schools and within the city that we are committed to them staying in the city, we can get them to stay and hear them. And more importantly, as we look towards this transition plan from control by the state to control locally, we need to make sure that all voices are heard in this. I've had the opportunity to attend in person and watch almost all of the meetings that the school committee has had regarding transition. And we need to ensure that student voices are heard, educator voices are heard, and the community has a say in that transition. Because the state can say, here you go, your schools are back. But until we have a committed community and full school community that are ready for our schools to be back within the Hoyoke Public Schools and within the city of Hoyoke, we're going to see ourselves right where we were. So we need to make sure that all of those voices are being heard and all of those stakeholders are being engaged with that process. I just want to thank you all again for taking the time tonight. I know that you all have busy schedules, and I really appreciate everything that all of you do. Madam President, Madam Vice Chair?
Thank you, appreciate it.
It's great to say both Madam President and Vice Chair.
Isn't it, isn't it really?
So Counselor Greeney, and then Counselor Devine.
Yes, quickly, Mr. Sheehan, once again, maintaining consistency. It was interesting to note that you're in favor of hiring from within the ranks of the school system. That might be somewhat refreshing, but how do you feel about the MCAS?
So I think that question is twofold, and some people have touched upon that. The MCAS as an assessment that can benchmark and see where students are and how educators can meet their needs, I think is appropriate, just like many of the other assessments, both educator-created and third-party-created that educators use. The fact that we are penalizing students to not graduate because they don't pass one test. Our public schools have high-quality, rigorous instruction that follows the pacing set forward by the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education of what they're supposed to meet. We also hire high-quality, trained, licensed educators, many of whom have at least master's degrees or higher degrees. And we tell them, do you know what? Teach these students for 13 years, assess them all along the way. But right when they get to graduation, it's not up to them if they graduate or not. So the professionals that we're putting in the buildings are not even able to make those decisions to ensure that our students are workforce, college, military, or whatever their next steps are, ready. The fact that we are taking a student who may arrive to our district, because we see it every day in Hoyoke and other urban communities, and say, okay, welcome to Hoyoke. We understand that you just came here and you don't speak any English, but sit down and take this test. And if you don't pass this test, you're going to take it three more times. And if you don't pass it then, you can't graduate. That's wrong. We only create inequities in communities of color, in special education populations, with our multi-language learners, to only fail. And by having this looming test, it's, the dropout rate isn't getting worse because students aren't passing the test. The dropout rate is getting worse because we have students that don't want to take the test, that don't want to come to school, because they see themselves doing okay in school. And then they're told, you're a failure, here's a certificate of completion. So the fact that we have a high-stakes graduation requirement is wrong. The fact that we have a measure of student performance that educators can use to provide supports to students, to be able to look at and provide supports for communities, that's okay, because that's another tool for all of our highly qualified licensed educators.
Counselor Devine?
Yes, hi, thank you, Devin, for coming down here. And your resume certainly has some experience there. One of the things that I'm interested in, as you probably know, and several people know, I'm very pro-union. And what I see here in your resume is that you served on the negotiating team for ratification of nine collective bargaining agreements. And I'm not positive, but when the schools went into receivership, did they take away collective bargaining?
Yeah, so when the schools went into receivership, all of those rights were taken from the school committee and given to that of the receiver. So the main person bargaining was technically the receiver, and that could be delegated out to other individuals. But prior to receivership, the school committee is actually the employer of record. So I think whereas like with the city, the mayor leads those negotiations with the different collective bargaining units of the city. On the school committee, the school committee are the ones leading those collective bargaining efforts. So the school committee is at the bargaining table, doing that, and working with those unions and making sure that agreements are made on both sides. I mean, it's a contract, so sometimes you can't have everyone winning, but you can hopefully get to a middle ground where everyone can at least walk away being happy, and it's a fair and balanced contract, and it works with the budget and the student needs.
Thank you.
Ms. Tensley-Williams?
Devin, just to be on the funny side, are you willing to run for president?
What was that?
For president?
Are you willing to run for president of the United States?
Rosalie, that's a question for another day, so.
Dr. Rivera Cologne?
Again, two questions. Would you be willing to run for the next term, should you be appointed?
Yes, yes.
And then how about time management? Would you be able to prioritize and have the time to serve the role?
Yeah, absolutely. I wouldn't have submitted my name if I wasn't ready for that. And I really took into a lot of considerations, spoke with my family, spoke with my employer, went through all of that, and knowing all of the requirements of the job and to really put in 100% into it, because that's what, I mean, that's what public service and this service needs is 100%, because you can't miss a meeting, you can't do the types of things to be successful in that. So absolutely, I'm ready for that.
I'll be the last question. So as the school committee continues their work to exit receivership, how will your personal and professional experience help strengthen the work?
So I think first and foremost, I think I'm going to talk about my role as being a communicator, and I think bringing people together. I touched upon earlier that we need to make sure that all of our stakeholders are engaged. And I know that I'm not going to be able to do that myself. So I think leaning on community partners and making sure that community partners understand sure that community partners understand the transition plan of the Hoyoke Public Schools and the Hoyoke School Committee with the state, so they can engage with members of the community. I think working with, I mean, it was great just to see the other day that I think Hoyoke had 25 new translators that were certified as licensed translators graduate. So I think engaging the licensed translators, engaging our parent and community staff that the public schools have, working with them. I also think my ability and knowledge just of being able to review our policies and see where we're going. I mean, this is such an interesting aspect when you think of how government works for the Hoyoke School Committee and Hoyoke Public Schools, that we get to really take a deep dive in our policies, in which many boards don't that often, and say, "Is this working right now for the Hoyoke School Committee? Is this going to work for the future? And if not, let's change it." And I think that going through our policies, and I know that there's a committee already working on that, and I know that's going on, but really focusing on that and saying, "What is going to work for the next 10 years? Are we nimble enough to be able to get the job done?" And I also think my background in school finance and in educator development is only going to help some of that with the committee, with the school community, and the city as a whole.
Alrighty. Thank you very much, Devin.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time. And if you are the public you, not you, but if folks are tuning in at home and you're like, "This doesn't seem like a city council meeting," it's a city council and school committee meeting right now, so just in case someone's tuning in from home. And the last resume that I have here is Raul Gutierrez. Come on in. And then just make sure that green light is on.
It's on.
Okay, great.
Do you want to hear me?
Yes.
So, thank you, and good afternoon. I think it's afternoon. So my name is Raul Gutierrez. I'm a professor at Hoyoke Community College, a proud parent of a fourth-grader going into fifth grade, Ian White, and a freshman at Hoyoke High. So I'm aware of the lower levels and the upper levels regarding what's going on. Also been lucky enough to be able to work with the youth at Hoyoke High. I taught early college courses at HCC at Hoyoke High campus, and also I have a ton of students that come from Hoyoke High and end up at HCC. I also have collaborated with different administrators in the high schools, specifically in the middle school, regarding dual-language program, creating a pathway, because they're building it as they're walking. So my son is the first, the only class to graduate from MECAF dual-language program. So we're building and we're creating spaces for them to be able to receive college credit for Spanish courses taken through HCC. So we've been, I've been working and collaborating. I think that my experience as an educator for 23 years, both at the college level, I've been working at HCC for 10 years, and I have also have experience regarding, as a parent, seeing what my child are struggling with and how to help them, and also creating a connection regarding like my administrative background regarding just HCC, and also some grant administration that I've done in the past, regarding creating spaces for them. I think that what we need to focus on is, as a school committee, if I am chosen, is regarding like understanding that our students are holistic, they're full human beings, regarding how their lives are going beyond the schoolwork, because it is very easy to say like our students are deficient or anything to that effect, but we have to understand that there's a lot of other things that like lead into how we lead our lives. Second, I think that teacher retention is key, especially high-achieving teachers, and that is something that we need to kind of like strategize, how to like create better opportunities and better safe, like better opportunities and better environments for our teachers to thrive and be able to move on, be able to stay. But I think that like with my experience, and just so you're aware, I was mulling it over regarding if I wanted to do this or not, and I did talk to my teenager, and he said, "Why not? Like, I mean, you're always at the high school anyway." So like, it would be a good idea for, so I said, "I'll throw my hat." I'm pretty impressed with the folks that are like here also applying for this. So I appreciate just allowing me to be here and be interviewed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I see. Counselor Graney first.
Quickly, sir, once again, what are your feelings about the MCAS test?
I agree with the majority of the folks that came up here. I think the MCAS is a good data point. But once again, mentioning regarding how our students are full humans, I think if we all got tested at this moment, we might, some of us might do well, some others do not. I think that you have to understand that there's qualitative and quantitative data to be able to understand how the students are doing. So, and I trust the teachers that are working with my students to be able to like do the material and teach the material well, for them to be able to assess if my son or my daughter are doing well. So I think that it is, it is wrong for us to expect our graduating folks to pass a test, and if they don't pass it, they can't graduate. So, thank you.
Dr. Caballero-Roca?
Good afternoon, Raul, and it's good to see you. Thank you so much for throwing your hat in. You mentioned something that really resonates with me, which is the life of the students beyond school. Could you expand on that, please? Thank you.
So, I think that we all understand that there is chronic absenteeism. That's an issue. I teach at a community college, and we see similar issues regarding our student population is local, from Hoyoke, Chicopee, and Springfield. I think that there is house insecurity, food insecurity, that are like affecting our students' lives, and understanding that if a student is hungry, they're going to try, like, they're not going to be able to do well in the school. So like, there is, there is all these other things that are doing this. For example, I am working with a group of students within LASSA, which is the Community Empower, Community Empowering Lab, and just to shout out, they're doing a youth conference on the 28th. So it is speaking to them and allowing them to expound like issues that they're dealing at and outside of the classroom. And as an educator, you've got to understand that the student is just not the person that's sitting in front of you. He's the person that lives outside of the classroom as well. And if you don't take that into account, you're doing a disservice for the student. It is kind of unfair to not understand the student as a whole human being. And I think that there is the holistic approach regarding understanding that the student might not be paying attention, not because they're being disrespectful, and maybe they're dealing with something at home. And my approach is always asking, "Are you okay?" Instead of saying like, "What are you doing? Put your phone away." I say, "Is everything okay?" And then they're like, "Well, tell me." So I think that, back in said that. And I think that we have to understand that a lot of our students at the Hoyoke Public School System deal with a lot of things that have to do, that are beyond the teacher's control. And it's not the teacher's role to solve all the issues, but it's the teacher's role to be aware of them, or at least attempt to be aware of them and be empathetic with the students.
Ms. Tensley-Williams?
It's nice to have you here. When I was a mentor for the Young Marines in Hoyoke, what I did was I got permission, because some of the kids could not write. A lot of them were Hispanic. So I got permission from the leaders. If they could answer the questions, would it be okay if I write what they're saying? Because they actually knew. Some of the kids just did not know how to write. And a lot of people cannot take tests. You mention tests, they just freak out. And a lot of times, they do know the answer, and I found that out, and I said, "Please, if they can give me the answer to the question that I asked them, is it okay if I write down and then I'll just initial it?" They gave me permission for that, and a lot of the kids did pass.
I think that, like, taking into account that, like, education is always showing the ability to understand the information that you're consuming in the moment. So like, there's this move to move away from tests just across the board in education. It says, "Don't prove anything besides that you're able to concentrate within that hour, but you might understand the material." So I think that there is this questioning, like, are tests even relevant in the real world?
Thank you for coming.
Yeah, thank you.
Dr. Rivera Cologne?
I bet you can guess what I'm going to ask.
Yes.
So, should you be appointed? Would you run for the position?
Yes.
And how about time management for everything that's required for the position?
Well, I think that Dean and Grasshaw have taught me to like, we like manage a lot of things. So I think that I'm pretty good at managing my time. And to be honest, I wouldn't have applied or sent my resume, because I think that I'm passionate about not only my children being in the school system, but also the children of the city itself, because I think that those folks are going to take over at one point, and we've got to, we've got to make sure that they're ready and supported, so.
Final question of the evening, when I find it. Oh, God, I had it. As the school committee continues their work to exit receivership, how will your personal and professional experience help strengthen the work?
I think that, first of all, like, I'm bi-cultural, bilingual. I'm fully, I'm fluent in Spanish. I think that is also important. That's an asset to have, especially in this city. Also, I think I allow the voices of the youth to kind of like lead the work and the students, my work. So I think that having this contact with these young people and kind of like filtering it to the school committee and allowing them to guide their own school system into something better, whatever that might mean in the future. Also, I think that I am really hardworking. I am incredibly like committed to this work, because I think, I work in a community college, which is the most democratic access to higher education. So I think that having folks, and a lot of the students that come from HPS end up at HCC, and I see the potential and I see the growth, so I think that like my passion for the work is going to be there.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your time.
Thank you.
I just want to say thank you so much to each of the individuals who submitted their names. It was very heartwarming to see so many people were interested for this position, so thank you again.
And just before we go into the next part, I just want to double-check that no one else in this room or online. You have the chance to, so, all right?
I'll move, do we go to the first ballot?
All right, there's a motion's been made and seconded. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Mr. Kennedy?
No, I just have a question for the Madam President or Madam Vice Chair. I do not have a vote at this table. For those of you who do not know, I've been on this committee for three years. That's why I'm sitting here. I don't have a vote. I was wondering if it was possible for me to put my insight in, or my, I guess, recommendation, or who I would vote for if I had a vote, since I can't actually vote.
Make a motion that we
Second.
Allow that.
All right, motion's been made and seconded under discussion.
Thank you. So again, I've been on the school committee for three years now, and there were two candidates here. First of all, I was wildly impressed. Not a single candidate, I think, would not serve their students. But there was one specific candidate that stuck out to me right away, because he's proven to be a very good advocate for students and teachers in this district, as well as had the experience necessary in this district to fulfill this position. So if I had a vote at this table right now, again, there was not a single candidate that wouldn't serve well, but I would, I would cast my vote for Kyle Chambers. I've seen him constantly advocating for students and teachers, and I don't think, I think that would be a great decision.
Thank you, and thank you for being here. All right, so there was another motion made and seconded for the first ballot. So with that, the clerk will call the roll. And remember, whoever gets to 12 votes first will be the appointed representative.
Anderson Burgos?
Devin Sheehan.
Hartley?
Devin Sheehan.
Devine? Givner?
Devin Sheehan.
Graney?
Sheehan, Mr. Sheehan.
Jordan?
Devin Sheehan.
LaGrasse Smith?
Devin Sheehan.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Sheehan.
Licaccio?
Sheehan.
Israel Rivera?
Devin Sheehan.
Jenny Rivera?
Devin Sheehan.
Sullivan?
Devin Sheehan.
Bacon?
Kyle Chambers.
Caballero-Roca?
Raul Gutierrez.
What was it? Can you repeat that, please?
Raul Gutierrez.
Calamor? Garcia?
Devin Sheehan.
LeFave? Devin Sheehan. Rivera Cologne?
Devin Sheehan.
Romero?
Devin Sheehan.
Tensley-Williams?
Devin Sheehan.
Wellahen? Wilson? Mr. Devin Sheehan. Devin Sheehan appointed on the first ballot.
All right, thank you, everyone, and thank you again. And thank you all very, very, seriously, every single person who put their name in. Thank you for doing that. Please keep doing that.
I move to adjourn?
Can I just make one brief comment?
Yeah.
I think we were blessed to have a wonderful group of candidates, and I would just like to encourage each and every one of you to run for school committee in the next election. It's really important for our
Or city council.
The health of our community to have competition in our politics. Run for any seat you want.
Or mayor.
That's right.
They're all out there.
But run.
Run for it all, please.
On the motion.
All right, so the motion was made and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll take a five-minute break. And then we'll be back, so five minutes. Thank you, everyone.